Good evening and welcome to the June 12, 2017 work session of Mayor and City Council. We have one item of discussion this evening, but before we get to it, it's my understanding we need to, we need a motion to conduct a closed executive session this evening. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Gaithersburg conduct a closed executive session tonight, Monday, June 12, 2017, immediately following the scheduled session pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305 B1I, the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. The topic is to discuss, to discuss is a personnel matter to conduct the City Attorney's Annual Performance Evaluation.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Okay, that carries five zero. Thank you very much. Now, we will begin our work session, and I will let Deputy City Manager Dennis Ensley take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here tonight with Mark Shiroko, the Chief of Police, and David Trader, who is with Trader Group Architects, and we're going to be providing you an update on kind of the schematic design for 16 South Summit, which includes the possibility of relocating the City Council Chambers to that facility. Tonight, we hope to leave with the decision on whether or not to proceed with the relocation. I'll give you a little bit of background about the project of where we've been and where we're headed, and then David will actually provide kind of the overall context of the police station design, and then focus on the schematic design for the council chambers itself. And then Mark will kind of give you a perspective of the Police Department regarding the relocation, and then I'll finalize or sum up where we're at in terms of the overall expected cost of the relocation project. Feel free to ask questions during the process, so if you want to interrupt, that would be In general, the city purchased 16 South Summit with the intent of converting it to the police station. Given its size, it was a little bit larger than what is needed for the anticipated build out to 2025 for the police station facility, so we will have some extra square footage. The city has held a couple of work sessions already, one back in 2015, which kind of just went over the general process of how we would approach this project. And then, I do have a slight correction. On September 12, 2016, we came before the City Council to kind of broach the idea of relocating the council chambers to this building on the ground floor. And with that, you provided the direction to go ahead and look at those options. So we actually spent the last three months with the design team, which is made up of various individuals from the Police Department and City employees, looking at the various alternatives, and I think we looked at probably five to seven alternatives with or without the council chambers, and tonight we're presenting what turned out to actually be the best option, which is considered by the design team, that does include the council chambers. And with that, I'll turn it over to David, and he can kind of talk about the existing site. I will chime in from now and then again, to kind of make some additional points.
And I think we invite questions as we go for clarification as well. So I'm David Trader, and it's a pleasure to finally be in front of you and talk to you. Hope we get a good sense of interaction this evening, I'm looking forward to it.
Welcome, David.
Thank you. Going to carry this through site plans first, and then we're going to do a brief presentation of the floor plans themselves, so you get a sense of where the different parts sit within the facility. We do have kind of a simple flyby, just to give you an experience of what the exterior may look like, once this is all done, we'll also get into that. And then I think we're going to be focusing specifically on council chambers and the space around all of that. So that's what we're going to try to cover. On your screen, I'm going to go ahead and use the cursor to try to annotate where we are. You're kind of looking at a north-south orientation for the building, and I say that because there's going to come a time in the drawings when we turn them 90 degrees, and east is down, so I'm just preparing you for that as we get into the presentation. The right-hand side is South Summit. The upper roadway is Old Town Road, and then Falk's Corner Ave runs right to the left-hand side of this, with all of the parking lot behind 16 South Summit as well. So to orient you from here, City Hall is right across the street on the right-hand side of the drawing or the photograph. A couple other things that surround us here, we have St. Martin's on the bottom, and the lower left-hand corner, you can kind of see some white peeking out there, is the current police station, where the chief currently resides. So that'll give you a sense of where we are on the site, and the next site plan is going to use that same orientation. Oops, went a little too fast. Sorry. Okay, so, the concept has been to date to utilize the existing back parking lot as it currently is, but in, in police facilities, we always try to find some level of a Sallyport area. We also have other areas for parking of the official vehicles and so on. And so we're trying to find an area on the site that does not disrupt an awful lot of the balance of the site for the parking of those vehicles. And so, in blue, what you're seeing is a pass-through that has a gate on either side, and so, police vehicles may come in off of South Summit Avenue, or through the parking lot, and access that area that has a pink and a yellow area on top of it. We're maintaining the balance of that existing building and renovating it completely within, with the exception of a Sallyport that we're adding for the vehicles, and that's that pink area on the south side of the building.
David, for the public, can you explain the Sallyport concept?
Certainly. So there's an area where we have to bring vehicles in and prisoners in to process them within the building, and so we like to try to get them undercover and behind a closed door, so that there's no opportunity for them to flee once they're in that area. So that's what the Sallyports intended to do. So once you pull in, garage doors go down, and you're secure on both sides.
Thank you.
Yep. The other part of a facility like this is it is a 24/7 facility, and the goal is to make sure that it's running at any point in time, and so it will have a decent generator backup to it. So the intent of trying to bring that generator into this facility will require that we allocate some area on the ground floor outside of the building, and so what you're seeing in the yellow is the generator sets behind a closed, not a closed, an enclosed area, that will try to match the brick on the exterior of the building. So there will be a wing wall that goes out from the building and surrounds it, and I can try to show you that in a 3D flyby. Once you're outside of that Sallyport area, you're still in what we would call kind of a secure area of the site, so you do see these gates on both sides. So once a vehicle pulls in there, that is one more opportunity to make sure that the person in the car does not flee, and so both of those gates are closed at the same time. You're also behind what we call the hardened line of the facility at that point, so in trying to maintain the balance of the parking area behind the facility, we've allocated this area that is currently parking in the existing facility for the official vehicles. And so, that's the other blue area, and you'll see behind what is difficult to read, but which is a site fence surrounding this entire area, you'll see that there's a sidewalk for people to get out of these vehicles to be able to walk in behind the secure fence line and into the police facility portion of the building. That might make a little bit more sense once we get into the floor plan. But the bottom line is, everything within this colored area is fenced, and that area is kind of, we call it the hardened line. The intent, though, is to make it aesthetically pleasing. It'll have a black wrought iron look aluminum-type fence, so it'll have the ability both to provide security and also be an aesthetic feature on the site.
One of the other issues we tried to look at, because we're going to be closing access for the public to South Summit, we looked at trying to make sure there was a connection to east St. Martin's, basically because they use this for pickup during the school year. So we've tried to facilitate that they could come up this way and then still use the parking lot in some configuration for school pickup or drop-off at a later point in time, because they would not be able to use this as stacking, which is what they do now. So they stack on South Summit and then come here, so there will be some necessity for them to make some changes to how they do drop-off and pickup. It's mostly pickup, because drop-off comes at different times.
Maybe one other feature of the site. There are a number of items that typically you'll try to enclose, you'll have kind of a small warehousing area, you'll, I'm speaking for the chief now, but typically you'll also have a vehicle processing bay of some sort, so when you bring an impounded vehicle in, you're able to do the kinds of work that you need on it from a forensic standpoint. Bulk evidence storage, that we don't want to waste good valuable money inside the building on, will come outside as well. And so there is a, there's a small building in the lower left-hand corner of the site of about 3,000 or 2,600 square feet that will encompass all of those items, so that is also in the lower left-hand corner of the site. We envision that being a less expensive, possibly pre-engineered building with some sort of bricks around to make it look like the balance of the building. So I think those make up most of the parts of the site. The big goal was to try to maintain a large chunk of existing parking to be used for some, and I'll just say "other" purpose, and that's to be determined. And then the other thing that came out of all of these designs that we worked through was the desire to still maintain kind of a through way from the Old Town Avenue and South Summit corner back into the parking lot, so that public could still get into the building from either of those directions. We went through a number of versions that did not have that ability, and in the end derived the concept where we can still pass through the center of the building as public.
Chief, where do we store our current impound, impounded vehicles on the city?
In the back fence lot, from the current station, behind the rear of it.
There's no, nothing covers anything else, right?
Yeah, down the other, just behind the chain link fence.
Does that cover site plan for folks?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to proceed to the first floor plan, and as Dennis mentioned, this version, we call it 2A, but that's not of importance to you guys. What it does do is it brings the council chambers into the building. That area in yellow is the mayor and council chambers in this concept, and so, the very high-level vision of this was that this, now we've, by the way, now we've turned the view 90 degrees, and so, that Old Town Avenue, South Summit Avenue corner is now down here in the lower right-hand corner. And you can see the, the walkway up, the steps and so on, that you're all familiar with from the Old Town Ave side. These are the planters in front, and one of the things that we wanted to do from the outside was to try to also improve the aesthetic of whatever we may put back here for Sallyport, we've kind of mimicked those planters that are around the building in the lower left-hand corner, and we'll keep developing all of these. The one other thing I didn't mention at the beginning of this is these are all really preliminary. We call them schematic design, so things will modify and change as we go, but you're seeing kind of the high-level thinking here. So that, that path through the building currently goes from upper left-hand corner to lower right-hand corner, and there are a series of pieces of the building in gray here that are parts of the structure that we want to maintain, because they're the high-cost structure portions. A couple of them are elevators, there are the stairways up and down the building, and there are bathrooms, which as you all know are the expensive parts to replace in a building. So the goal's been to maintain those as much as possible, and you'll see on each floor we do that. Beyond that, then we have some basic police items in a building. So we have holding and processing, then we have evidence processing area, and then we have a training component, and then lastly, we have all of the office spaces. And you'll see that we've moved more or less all of the office spaces to the second floor of the structure, allowing all the important parts that really take the access from the first-floor requirement on the first floor. So, on the left-hand side now, if, if I were brought into the facility in a vehicle, I'd be brought into this Sallyport area and brought into the holding and processing area, that's what the red is. Then, what else, the other part that happens here is officers come in from their vehicles, and they come down the pathway, upper left-hand corner, down to this door, and that door is their access point to a central stair that goes up and down their portions of the building. So it circulates up through all of their function in the building, separate from any emergency access or regress stairs in the building. You'll see the evidence processing, so everything that has to happen when an officer gets out of the vehicle, all happens at that area of the building. And then, of course, the other thing that happens is I may come in with a complaint or have to have my fingerprints taken or something like that, and therefore I'd come in this front corner, and I'd come to the transaction counter and be taken care of up there at the front side. So that would be the extent of my, my ability to get into the facility as the public. The other things on this floor, I'm going to get more deeply into these when we talk about the council chambers, mayor and council chambers, are the training space, which is also a public function, because it's essentially a large classroom, and then we'll get further, as I said, into the facility that's in yellow. Just to continue the circulation for the police, if they came up to the next floor in this dark gray stair tower, they would be in all of their operational land, and so all of the components of the police operations and administration occur on this floor. The green, the orange, the light blue, and the purple are all essentially office components. They're used in various different ways, but they function the same as we would look at them as an office component. So you'll see that the way we've designed it, more or less, functions to allow you to circulate in that as if it were an office building being fitted out that way. And the last part of that, if you continued up those stairs as an officer, not as the public, then you would get up to the portion that has your locker rooms, bathroom showers, fitness, and defensive tactics space, and so those are up in the salmon color on the left-hand side of the building. So what remains on this floor is an area of the building that is open, that has not been allocated for any function as of yet, and that would not be police function. So that's kind of how the three floors of the building work. Their function is more or less on the left-hand side of the building, with the exception of the second floor, which is all of their office component. Does that give a sense of how the chief's department may work? Okay.
Absolutely.
You're good. So if we go back down to the ground floor, let's spend some time on, on what we've allocated here, and one more time, high-level, this would be up to you folks to help us design at this point. The real goal is to try to show that the space holds whatever it needs to hold, and to talk to you about a few of the challenging parameters that we find when we get into the floor here. So again, I said in the light blue that I, as public, coming into the police station may come to the transaction window in the lower left-hand corner, or I may walk in for a city council function, or I may drive in from the city council function. So if I were walking, I may come in from the, the corner, and if I were driving, I may park in the back parking lot, come in through these doors. So what we've set up is a council foyer area, and that's more or less just the hallway that you see out here with some of the images and so on. And then, we have a space that is kind of a pre-area for the council chambers, and it's a seating area that you could also use for training separately, but for you guys right now, when you go up to the mezzanine for your additional seating, this actually allocates at least 50 additional seats to the floor, and we're going to show you an image of what that might look like in the future. Couple of other things here, this is the, the chambers, the dais is shown semicircle, it may not be that. I will tell you that it's about one and a half times the width of the one that you're sitting at, so there's, there's a little bit more elbow room in that, so just to give you a sense of width, it's much wider than what you're sitting at now. The concept would be to still step it up a step to make sure that you have height, and then what this is showing is 90 seats just within that space, and quite frankly, it could accommodate more, depending on how you circulate around it. A little bit more room in front of the dais compared to where we're sitting now.
How many seats do we have in here now?
We have about 63, depending on how it's laid out.
Okay, so, about a third more would be very comfortable in that room, without even the overflow room. Okay.
And what the whole thing does is it allows you to have great vision of what's going on up front and vice versa. You don't have the corner that you have here, and so it gives a straight, nice rectangular view. One of the challenges is the, if you, if you take a look at the regularity of the columns throughout the facility, they are on this grid, and suddenly you see that one is missing from this grid. So, what a structural engineer has looked at is a couple of ways of handling taking out a column and trying to make the space as open as possible, and he's got two ideas. One is you put a deep beam that runs the whole span across the width of this. If you do that, you're going to be pretty far down from the ceiling with that piece of steel. So the other solution is to do something a little bit like you've done here, and go ahead and put a column on either side, and if you do that, we don't actually have to drop the ceiling height at all. He sandwiches the structure, and he builds the width of the structure up to accommodate that. So, couple ways of looking at how we deal with the structure and the space to give you as clear a view as possible. Everything in yellow is to be designed, however, right now, there's a glass wall between the two, so that if you did have overflow, people could still see in, you could put monitors behind that, people could still be able to hear and see what's going on, and visually see what's going on within the space. And we talked about this community and training room, and this is also a police training space, as well as training space for others, about 50 seats seating in, in classroom style. So if you're at a desk with seats, you're going to be about 50 people. If you don't have desks in there, you actually can accommodate quite a few more. The concept here is that it's connected somehow to council chambers, nobody's really talked about exactly where the door goes, but it's almost as if it could be an anteroom for, for council and mayor at some point, and they could come in through there, but variety of ways to be able to use the space. There's some storage for that space, there's some storage for council chambers, and then we have an audiovisual control space that will be right off of both of these spaces and run whatever AV and technology you've got within the spaces, and it'll work for both. So that's a floor plan concept, the hope is to develop that further if you decide to go into the space. Good with the plan, we'll move to some images?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Again, no prompting here, so forgive any of the way that we've treated aesthetics. We can do anything under the sun, what this gives you is sense of those, this is that corridor that runs through the center of the building. From a cost estimating standpoint, we've just gone through an estimating exercise, the goal was to try to show basic materials so that they could take some reasonable estimates off of this. So we're showing partial wood panel, you guys select whatever colors you want, whatever materials you want, it's just trying to build up a cost estimate palette for somebody to work from. You can see a flooring concept throughout, and you can see bulkheads and ceilings. The building is about 12 foot six from floor to floor on the ground floor, so the ceilings are not going to be tremendously high, but once you get a ceiling in there, that ceiling will be the height of the center tray area here. So that gives you a sense of what your total height will be throughout this. To the left-hand side is where you would enter into that four-room, to the council chambers, and then we do whatever you want on these walls, we just happen to put a community board there, but all of these are to be designed. If you turn and move into that, that classroom or training room in front of council chambers, just a concept, and all of this can be designed, but these are those glass windows, and we could easily put monitors up here on either side, so that people can see that. You start to get a sense of the height of the chambers, though. You see the dais up front. This happened to use kind of a heavy column structure versus this lighter column structure on either side, you can start to see those. Views are fairly unobstructed. One of the things that we're going to show you from the exterior is, on the ground floor, you have these great windows everywhere in the existing building, and we have two things that we want to deal with, with those. First of all, is we've got, we've got to get some privacy in there, especially for some of the police functions. We also have to get some level of security on those, particularly for the police functions, but we'd like to leave some of them. And so, at least at the back of the council chambers, and this is against Old Town Road, the hope is to leave at least an upper echelon of windows to try to bring in daylight, and based on whatever you all want to do here on the left-hand side, which is against the parking lot, we can leave all or a portion of windows and then put some kind of security film on those to make sure that they're a secure location. I suspect that as you get into the television and AV controls, we may have to really treat those carefully, so I'm sure that'll become a big discussion item. You can see that there's space, a decent floor-to-ceiling height here, and then on the perimeter, we're just showing a bulkhead that drops down a little bit like this to run your heating, ventilating, air conditioning through.
So this is a view from the, the rear room in the yellow portion, the overflow?
It is.
Yeah. What's the rationale for bifurcating the room by glass?
First is, yeah, absolutely optional. You may say, put a vault folding partition in there, you may say nothing in there, I mean, it's, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, we had floated the idea of folding partition some months ago.
So that's totally open for design, but there's money in there for this, because they've designed at least what you see there, or they've budgeted that.
Okay.
This shows you as if you stepped right into council, right at the backside, and I think it gives you a good sense of height. Again, what you would see is that center section is this high, and the bulkhead probably drops about to that. Space is one and a half times as wide, and it's probably about 30% deeper than the space that you have. And again, you're seeing about 90 seats there, six across the front, however many at the Just to give you a sense of that community and training room, so this is, you know, this is another community space, so there's some opportunity here. Because we took the other column out of the ground floor, and because this is considered an essential facility by code, because it's a police facility, we have to step up the structure a little bit in the building, so to remove one more column becomes pretty problematic at the ground floor. So as a training space, our structural engineer would really like it if people left this other column in here, even though it sits in that, that space in the middle of the training space. So that just gives you a sense of why that's there, but the rest of it is, it's a basic finish design, and you'll see that the windows still look out to the exterior as well. These are elevations, we're going to pop out of these for a second, and I'm going to try to narrate this from a walk-through.
I think that's that.
Yes. Okay, so now you're at the corner, on the right-hand side is Old Town, and on the left-hand side is South Summit. We would not do any modification to the front, other than whatever we do to the new front doors, and you'll start to see that all around the ground floor, we've got this horizontal mullion in all the windows that's not currently there, so if you're, if you were to go out there today, all of the windows look like the one that the arrow is on. They're full height, there's no break at the middle. What we've been talking about with police was trying to make sure from your head down, we've got some kind of protection on the backside of this, and so the majority of what we would probably do there, as you start to go around the building, the dark gray would be kind of a spandrel panel, so it would look like darker glass, and behind it, we would do a little kevlar finish and then a stud wall, so that from the inside, it looked like a wall, from the outside, it looked like glass, and then up above that, we have daylighting come in into all these spaces, so that it's still a very bright airy building. So, throughout this circulation here of this little video, you'll see that the dark gray is at the lower level. You see the planters that are still in front here, and we're going to come around to the Sallyport area in a moment. The building is comprised largely of, as you know, cast stone along the bottom, so the tan that you see on the bottom of the building across the street is all called cast stone. This rim around up, the area between the first and second floor is also cast stone, and these are metal panels at the top and the bottom, and they're, they're meant to look like some kind of, you know, finish between the two, and then this is all of the glass. So, in all of the office areas, you'll see the dark gray for spandrel, which would have wall behind it, and the light blue-ish green is glass above. Then you start to get to the holding areas, and then this is the Sallyport on the side. So this is the addition to the building. And I'll stop in a second. So, as you came around that corner and came in the existing driveway, there would be a fence with a gate, and again, it would be kind of a black picket fence. We try to get a planter in here that looks like all of the other planters around the building. For the Sallyport, we would mimic the architecture of the rest of the building, bringing those vertical brick elements, and then the horizontal cast stone, so it looks like it's an appendage to the building, it doesn't look like something that shouldn't be there. Coming around the side, you can see, in addition to the Sallyport, you can now see the generator enclosure. These are pretty big generators, and so there is some height to them. We still can talk further with our entire design team here about how high the wing wall is and exactly what it looks like. Our, our goal had been to try to protect the wing wall area, and then put bollards in front of the, the generators.
Where's the fuel tank for the generators?
Yeah.
Is it going underground?
So, part of the reason they're so high is because I think this set had belly tanks.
Ah.
Yeah. They're about a six-foot-high generator, and then about a three-and-a-half-foot-tall belly tank.
Okay.
Any thought on doing a, a brick wall facing onto Summit?
All the way across?
Well, at least on the, the portions that are facing this Summit and the house and St. Martin's.
We can, we can talk about that, yeah. To try to hide this whole area?
Correct. Certain members of the public have raised sensitivities about, it's valid concerns about co-located functions, and, you know, having a police force sitting there in front of fencing you can look through.
That's, I think it's a good concept, so we should bring it back to this team and go through that.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Thank you. Then I think you have a question about that same thing on the backside, so it's one to discuss here, because this is that fence running around the balance of the perimeter of the parking lot.
How tall is the fence, 10 feet or 6 feet?
We're showing six.
Six feet. That would still require planning commission approval.
Right.
And there would probably be a privacy fence along the property line from the adjacent property, as opposed to a wrought iron or a look.
Yeah, so if you had a privacy fence, I'm like, maybe a brick wall, but I think that's...
Something that's shielding the view and is secure for obvious reasons.
Yeah. Yeah. And just continuing real quickly here, the pre-engineered building would be brick-faced to try to give it the same kind of look as the balance of the building and still keep it very cost-effective. That would be as simple as possible. It's got a unit heater in it only to keep it warm, no air conditioning, concrete floors, no real finish inside. It's just meant to be a storage facility.
So the gabled roof is still preliminary as well?
It is.
Does it doesn't kind of, it doesn't really match the architecture of the main building?
No, it doesn't. It fortunately or unfortunately matches the police department's current roof line. So the balance of the parking is open. And what you do see here is that is the police access point for the balance of their facilities, and the public walks into the set on the left or partway to the left here.
So the police entrance is inside the fence?
It is.
Okay.
And you're now going by that anteroom, and now these are the chambers. And the thought was that you do something with the bottom of the windows there and keep the clear story light or the high window lighting into the chambers. But we can do just about whatever you want there. And then you kind of finish your roll around the building. We do have in our budget that we would be doing exterior work to the brick to make sure the brick is all clean, clear, and has good masonry pointing to it. And we'd be doing some restoration to the exterior to make it just clean and finished looking.
Is there a need for a handicap ramp on that corner?
There is. And there are also an exit door for both the chambers and for the classroom, where we also have to bring ramps out. I should've brought that up on the site plan, but we have ramps shown for each of those as emergency egress. Does that give you a sense of how the exterior might look?
Yep.
Okay.
And with that, I'll kind of let Mark kind of give a perspective from the police department on the overall design.
We have looked at the different concept designs. And you go back to the previous designs that we received, there's five of them. And I can say without any reservations whatsoever that concept, this concept here, 2A, with the council chambers moving, this is the design that meets all the needs of the police department. This design right here. The other designs, if we were to move forward with those, we'd have to go back and to the drawing board and make some refinements to it. With the way it's located right now, with the police department taking roughly half the first floor and all the second floor, we have the security procedures in place. Whether it be card access, like occupying that second floor, it not only satisfies our needs, I think it also satisfies some of the other city department's needs with the extra space once that decision's made for what other city departments will be located within that facility. So I fully support concept 2A. That concept has, as well as the other two additional designs, have been shown to every member of the police department. And universally, this is the concept that's supported by the police department. There, I've heard no negative feedback whatsoever with this layout here for this design which David just presented to you.
So chief, are you, is your position articulating if the council chamber moves? Or are you articulating a position, a preference as to whether the council chamber should move?
You know, I'm neutral on that, whether it moves or not. This design here has the council chambers relocating. And as a result, that's, with that space being occupied, that affected all of the other designs that we put into here with the different functions of the department, where they're located. And it just flows the way it should with the council chambers relocating.
We do have, not in your packet, but in the presentation, two other designs that don't include the council chambers. So if council wants to know what the issues are with those particular designs, some of the issues are some of the leftover space is really hard to get to function within the police department. And then there are competing interests of trying to keep the police department on Level 1 and Level 2 and leave the third floor for city. But we can go over those should you have questions. In terms of rest cost estimates, as David pointed out, we really have put some numbers to these. We would estimate the cost would be between 1.8 and 2.2 at the far end. It all depends on the finished material. I will point out that...
That's for the entire interior of the facility?
That would be for the...
Police?
No, the police station's a separate budget.
That's a separate, okay. So this is the council chambers, okay.
Part of that cost, about $500,000, is roughly related to the relocation of the AV control equipment. And I will note that that equipment is reaching age of life. In fact, in terms of plan, we have a plan to replace that in FY19 already, whether it moves to the new location or is here in this facility. That's roughly about $500,000. We already have in the capital improvement, or sorry, in the equipment replacement fund, about $500,000 for that allocation. So in terms of additional cost, we would be looking at roughly 1.3 to 1.7. We really think it's probably more in the 1.8, but it really depends on the type of finishes that are picked for the council chambers and the type of furniture that are picked.
So Dennis, does that $500,000 include AV procurement? Or is it just the relocation of the AV equipment we currently have?
That would be all the AV equipment that we need to run for televising the council and planning commission. And either way, we have to do that probably in FY19. It's just dependent on whether it occurs here or it occurs in a new location.
Yeah, so to me, that doesn't seem like, you know, cost for moving. That's just...
No, and that's why I point out that, you know, with the 1.8, that includes roughly $600,000. 'Cause we would also have the ability to, which is a little bit unique than we have now, with the community room, because the AV room would already be located in the, with the council chambers, we'd have the ability to add cameras to it and function it as kind of a TV space, too. So when we had community events that we wanted to televise, whether that would be, you know, book readings or whether we have special events where we have kind of the monthly receptions, those could be televised. In addition, it might provide a more flexible kind of work session space should the council want a more non-formal work session space. We could still televise those items. Currently, we can't do that. The only space we have to televise is currently here in this facility.
So Dennis, in terms of cost, if we're looking at essentially the same expenditure on AV equipment, whether we stay, whether we move, and given that the, I guess my question here is, we have, if... Trying to compare here, whether we move or whether we don't move. We have a building there with a lot of space. We have a lot of space needs, whether it be here, be in other facilities in the city that we could use that building for. If we had, if we decide, I guess what we need to, if we're comparing costs on this decision, then what we'd wanna compare is if we, if the mayor and council chamber stays here, what would be the difference in cost of what we do move over there? Because we'd be moving, one way or another, we're moving something over there.
We haven't done any additional costs for other city facilities to move over there. There are some complications in the leftover space. And maybe it's easier if I run through the kind of alternative designs and then we go back.
While you're pulling that up, let me just also add that there's an opportunity benefit to using this space for something else if we're not using it as a council chamber anymore. And obviously, that's gonna have to be some study that goes into what we could use this chamber for if it was an alternative use. I don't know that it would be usable for office space, but it might, or some other use. So there's a potential additional benefit to having this space available for something else.
Well, yeah.
It's end cost, so we'd wanna know.
End cost. You have sort of the measurepost.
This wouldn't be the only space repurposed in the building. It would also repurpose the gallery and the audio.
From staff's perspective, there are a couple really pros in relocating the council chambers. One is the one I already talked about, that if the AV room moves over, we'd have the community room, which would also be able to televise events. And the other one would be improved sightlines in the existing, comparing the two council chambers. It would be much easier to see. We would have better overflow space as opposed to having people move from one floor to the next. It would all be on the same floor. In addition, because technology has changed in how the dais is set up, the costs I gave you for the AV room would not include any modifications we would need to make to the dais in order to accommodate additional monitors or different size monitors than there are here. We would be able to do that in the relocation, kind of reconfigure the dais to better fit. You know, and we talked about before that it's about one and a half times the size. One of the things that we often get comments on are how tight it is for you guys and also other commissions that are there, especially if they have drawings or other materials that they're looking at. In addition, it would free up space in City Hall. City Hall is basically at capacity. Again, there is going to be additional space in the building. Depending on which design is picked is relative. And that's why we haven't really looked at the costs associated with building out those other spaces 'cause it's gonna be so dependent on what's left over. One of the problems with just removing the council chambers from the thing, from the design is you're left with this very fairly awkward office space in terms of layout. And this is just one option where we have all the other facilities pretty much the same as you saw in the previous designs. This is a little bit too large for any current, it's either too large or too small for any current department. So trying to figure out a way to divide it up appropriately is going to be difficult with this leftover space.
What about the community room? Is that a necessary?
The community room was actually one of the program requirements when we set out that the council established a number of years ago was trying to make sure that there was enough space for Old Town if they wanted to hold an event or something like that to do it in. I call it the Catholic Jewish school.
Well, yeah, we all talked about it, but I think there's certainly a need for that within the city.
And the police department, that's in their program also, just because they have a number of events related to community officer items.
We also felt that it was important to send a message that if this is ultimately going to be a facility that's used both as a police department and for other functions, that we're sending that signal to the community that our police building is not going to be, you know, some walled-off structure, you know, some imposing place. It's gonna be welcoming to the community, and people wanna, we wanna make sure people feel that way. So the idea of putting a community room there, I think, helps facilitate that as, in addition to being a need.
Right. And we might...
I mean, it sounds important, I'm sure.
Council room, does it change? We probably would play with these two spaces and maybe still remove the column to some degree.
We don't have it on.
Okay, there you go.
To get a better open space for the community room. We might play with that aspect, but we haven't really gone that far until a decision is made.
So if that happened, there wouldn't be, oh, so there's another option. So there wouldn't be a need to move those pillars either? To install new pillars as well, so...
So kind of a fifth option, and we call this five 'cause we've worked through a number of these. This is another one that actually puts the police department all on one floor with the community room. And then on the second floor would be the police department and would free up the entire third floor. This actually works best in terms of additional uses for City Hall because all the facility would be on one floor. The police department do have issues with how this lays out and how it functions for them. So this is not a preferred option from their standpoint. There will need to be some internal discussion 'cause again, the previous option leaves us with two spaces that we would fill from City Hall. So you'd have some people on the first floor and some people on the third floor. Because the other two floor layouts remain the same. The gym would still be on the third floor.
Can you discuss those issues or anything more security type?
They're not necessarily security rated. It's really related to operational side. It would require more windows to be closed also in terms of a visual aspect because we're relocating kind of public space from there. But I think from a flow standpoint, what it does is, there is some security issue because we're having to divide the lobby area. So basically, this would be the PD entrance, and you would not be able to go from the street side all the way through to the community room. The only way to access the community room would be from the parking lot side because of the security needs to keep all of this under one zone.
How would employees access the upper levels in this design?
The upper level would be accessed through the rear, not from the front. So you couldn't come from City Hall. You'd have to go all the way around the building and come in. And then we would have divided elevators. In the previous designs, both elevators would go to limited floors as opposed to having dedicated elevators for the public use and the police station use.
So we would wanna keep city employees separated from the police as well as a security issue?
Yes. And that's the way it is now currently. The only portion of the facility that's kind of police joint would be the gym and their room where they're doing ops training, or not ops training, defensive training, tactics training. That would be open to other city employees, but not to the public.
So can you go back to 2A? So, couple of comments. First of all...
You want 2A with the council chambers or without?
With the council chambers, the original one that we were talking about. So, couple of things. First of all...
Yep, that was it?
We lost it? Okay, we're back. First of all, it seems awfully large. And I know that it's flattering to think that we will fill up the room on a regular basis, but that's actually very rare that we get a significant turnout. Especially, you know, the room itself, without the overflow space, is already fifty percent larger than this room in terms of capacity, let alone we have overflow space. So unless we do something egregious and really get the people coming out and incense, it's unlikely that we'll need that much space. So why do we have it if it's less likely that we're gonna use it? Is one question that I have for you, is that the optimal use of that much space? On the other hand, in terms of what goes where, my bias would be that it's more efficient for the day-to-day workings of the city to have people that are working full-time near each other whenever possible. The police station in one place is obvious, but keeping as much of the city staff in City Hall just makes more sense to me because we want these people to interact with each other and work together. And having to go across the street or even around the building in order to talk to each other is less optimal. You know, sometimes you get a lot of, a lot out of, you know, just going to the coffee machine and talking to people in different departments, let alone you need something, you can walk down the hall or go up one flight of stairs. So I would think that we would, that for the efficiency of the city, we would want as much as possible to keep people under one roof, which would be this one, which is why I'd be leaning toward moving the council chambers as much as I'd rather be next to everybody myself. So I understand, you know, several people have raised the intimidation factor of trying to, you know, we want more involvement from the public. And if people are intimidated by the presence of the police station right there, that's an issue. Whatever we can do in terms of decoration or designing of this hallway in the center or something to minimize that intimidation factor would probably be in our best interest. But I'm not sure, I don't have any ideas on what that would be. But my main concern here would be that we seem to be giving ourselves a lot of extra space for a facility that, where the needs for that space has not really been present. So is there something else we can do with it? Are we gonna have a daycare center in that outside room or...
So for this room, we would actually probably use this as a City Hall function type room?
Wait till they get the slide on the screen.
Here we go.
My screen. You're talking about the anteroom.
So the anteroom probably would be used more for training. One of the issues that we have with training is, so when we have computer training, we actually come here to the council chambers, which isn't very conducive to actually doing computer training, partly 'cause it's limited to the number of computers that we could have. So we would envision that the majority of the time, other than during council, this room would be used by City Hall employees or city employees in general as opposed to actual council chamber. This, we could use this room in that same fashion, but it's likely, given the time period, just like this room, it only gets used during meetings mostly. But it does allow us the ability to do that should we want to.
Well, one possible consideration, given what you just said, would be to move the divider. If it's gonna be a sliding wall, to move it up more so that you get a bigger use out of that other space. But I was just...
Well, if I could just play devil's advocate for a minute, we don't overflow this room very often, that's true. But we fill it or come close to filling it on a regular basis, particularly when we have a lot of presentations. I think with the fact that the city's growing pretty fast and that, you know, I... Perhaps if there, if people had the feeling that there was more room, more people would come, not believing that they're gonna end up in the gallery for overflow. come, not believing that they're going to end up in the gallery for overflow. I don't know, is, what do others think on that point?
So I think the, I think, where, I understand what Neil's saying, I, and I agree in part. I think what, but what the gist of it is, is that we need a little bit more flexibility in terms of the space and flexible uses. I think that we, we, you know, we know that additional space can be used for, for training or, you know, computer training, other types of training. We can use it for different types of community rooms that the community could come and use, if they wanted to come and meet with staff about certain things or, you know, I think that there's various options there. I guess the biggest concern I have, you know, I agree with those, those points, that we could find a different, you know, different locations for these room dividers and different configurations, maybe more than one, that could all be anticipated here, so that we could actually divide these rooms. The large room at least once and, and even the half rooms, perhaps once, so you could create three spaces out of, out of one, or two spaces out of one, so. The one concern I have and the questions I have, and this is really kind of an operational issue, is that we have the, this main corridor on the first floor, and we have a foyer, a council foyer, we have a public lobby that looks, it appears to have some seating, but I don't see any place other than the, but that's also adjacent to where your team will have their kind of reception and engagement with the public when they come in, right?
Yes.
To what, to some extent. So, you know, are we going to have any other staff here for people who happen to wander in the City Hall and find out, want to find out what's going on?
To be, to be honest, this operational, they actually staff this till nine PM, so it's actually a lot better than what City Hall would be after hours. So you would, if you wanted to know what was going here, you would have to go down to this counter, but there are lots of ways that we can treat that, that lead people down that corridor to talk to somebody down at this end. Because, to be honest, the majority of people are going to enter from the parking-
Yeah.
-lot. Only a few people are going to walk. This, the foyer could be treated more as kind of a lobby area for the council, as opposed to just walls, we didn't show any furniture, but there are ways to reconfigure the storage probably slightly or reduce it to do that. The column is, or the divider's probably in the location that serves best from a structural standpoint, because it's where the column is. Moving it would necessitate, kind of moving it where the, the next column bay window is, and so that would actually probably shortchange you slightly. We can explore those options. The other option is whether this is a hard wall or a movable wall can be discussed at any point in time. We've also talked about a way to maybe even just curtain the council chambers, so if you wanted to, you could function this in a different way and have two rooms that would be accessed in terms of, you know, rental or whatever. We probably wouldn't do a rental, but this could be rental, this could be rental.
And what if you were to take the council chambers and program it as swing space, so you make that community room? What, what could you put then in the, the blue area currently?
We'd have to look at the square footage, which is roughly twelve.
This part's thirty-one, this part is-
Twelve something.
Twelve, thirteen hundred, yeah.
We would have some type of city offices. The hard part is, most of the ground floor offices would not fit in that space. The one that comes to mind is somewhat Community Services, which is currently in Wells. But like planning and code, you know, none of those will fit in any of the ground spaces that are left over after the police station is designed. You know, some of the departments we've looked at moving are ones that are more citywide, like IT and stuff like that, we've looked at moving them in this location, just because they do multiple facilities. We haven't really explored any further than that, because we need to know what square footage is left over. To be honest, the, the easiest thing to do, keeping everybody here, is to free up these two spaces.
We, we, can, can you bring up the slide? There we go.
Because one of the problems we have here is really meeting room space. We, we just don't have enough conference room space-
Absolutely.
-for the entire city. So one of these, probably this space, would be converted to more conference room type space, and then the gallery would probably be converted to office space-
Right.
-and reconfigured.
So, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that before we have further discussion, we open it up to anybody from the public who wants to say anything on this topic. I, I was just gonna comment that I think the gist of your comments are, well, you want to kick us out. All right.
I, I think the, the gist is, if you don't move, we will eventually have to look at what happens to City Hall. And there is no space for us to grow here, so we either relocate to a different building or there's another addition eventually to City Hall. So to be honest, this is a cost value issue, at least from a, a short-term standpoint, that we already have space in an existing building we own, that frees up space here that could put off an addition or remod, a major remodel for City Hall to accommodate the growth of City Hall itself.
Actually, for some historical perspective, Rob, it was actually council members that suggested that this building would be a good use of civic, provide great civic uses in addition to providing a police station, we wouldn't have to build from the ground up. So the need for meeting rooms in the Old Town area, the meeting for, the need for community rooms to, and then create more space in City Hall for, for offices and for interaction with the public. But I, you know, I think that it's important that if you have a building like this, and it's obviously going to be the civic building, or one of those civic buildings, is that the first floor is where you have public interactions, and whether it's with the police or whether it's with our, with the council and our boards and commissions, and it makes sense to do that here. I don't think that the configuration of this particular room is, is, is the best that we can do in terms of use, in terms of our interactions with the public for these kinds of things. So, yeah, I think once staff realized that, that council was willing to entertain this, I think that they jumped on the opportunity to think about it, so.
So with that, let, let me open it up. Is, is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this? We asked if you could keep your remarks, no more than three minutes. State your name and address or neighborhood for the record, and when you have thirty seconds left, your, the timer will beep and turn yellow. When your time's up, it'll beep and turn red. Please.
My name is Darlene Bell, and I live in Gatesburg. I have just a couple of comments. Number one, it's, it's funny how you guys can find two million dollars to move City Hall across the street, but you can't find two hundred thousand to replace what was lost for the homeless program. That's one thing. And there are about twelve people in this room, and ten of them work for you all, so it's never filled to the capacity, you need these extra seats. So I really don't want you guys wasting my money moving this chamber across the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Not seeing any. Okay, we'll bring it back to the dais.
I have a, I have a couple of questions about the, the plan. Do we know how many parking spaces we think we'll be able to remain for the public in the lot, once, once the portion that's dedicated to the police is sort of blocked off?
It's, it's going to depend on the total quantity of ADA spaces there, but it looks like you'll have in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty parking spaces left in the balance of the lot.
Okay. How many do we have at City Hall right now?
I do not know off the top of my head. I think a hundred and fifty would exceed what we have at City Hall.
Okay. Also, in terms of the traffic flow, I mean, we'd obviously be blocking off the ability of, of non-police vehicles to go through the area that would be gated with the Sally Port. We still have the, the entrance and exit onto Old Town Avenue, and we still have apparently the entrance and exit onto, what's the name of the small road there?
Folks Corner.
Folks Corner. Would that suffice in terms of traffic flow, or have we not gotten that far yet to think about those kinds of issues?
We've looked at that, and we believe it would suffice.
Okay. And, couple of the questions that I already had about controlled access to the elevator, the chief already answered, ADA compliance, Mike already asked about.
I think the law would require that anyway.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I wasn't asking whether we'd have to, I'm asking, you know, has it already been done?
Yeah.
And if not, how would we go about that?
What you have to add to the building, basically, is the issue.
Uh, I, I agree strongly with what Neil said earlier about doing whatever we can aesthetically to ensure that if we do this move, that, that, well, really, whether the council chamber is there or not-
Right.
-to make sure that this is a building that is communicated to the public as a welcoming place and not a big fortress, not intended to impose or intimidate. This was actually an issue that I raised several months ago when we were first having these discussions. And the idea, you're right, Mike, was that by putting the council chambers in there, by putting community space in there, we would further that objective of showing that this is not just, you know, a standalone police station designed to, to send the signal that people should stay out. I think I used the term campus when we were talking about, you know, the idea of having, you know, this building, the open space that we have in front of City Hall with the amphitheater and then City Hall itself, and then even, you know, Wells Robertson House, and sort of looking at, looking at all of it as a, as a civic campus. I would, I know it's, it's early days for, for these kinds of details, but I would also encourage us to think about the way that we refer to this building as part of that process. And so, you know, I know that some communities have a building that they use for police station and other services, municipal services, and they call it like, you know, civic building and police station or something like that. So these are little things, but I think they do make a difference in the way that, that the, the purpose of the space is communicated to, to the public.
I agree. I think we should give some thought to it. It makes a difference.
So, in any, in any event, I'm generally supportive of the plan that's been proposed, and I do think that despite the cost, there's a significant benefit, which makes it worth it. I mean, we're going to have to invest significantly in this chamber and this building if we stay here, at a tremendous cost to our ability to do our jobs and staff's ability to do their jobs. This is an old building with a lot of technical challenges, a lot of technology challenges, and if we're going to have to invest in new equipment anyway, you know, it seems to me to make sense. I, I tend to think that the size of the council chamber as proposed makes sense, along with the mayor, you know, I, I think that because we're growing and because we do have occasional meetings where we have, you know, kind of a packed house, it makes sense for accommodating that future growth, to have a somewhat larger council chamber. I'm certainly willing to discuss with my colleagues, you know, exactly where the dividing walls should go and things like that. But I think generally speaking, as an early schematic design, this makes sense to me. I will continue to have concerns about how we balance the need for security in that building with the message that we're open and transparent, but I think we can walk that line with many of the, the, the different aspects that have been suggested.
Good design elements, yeah.
So most of you addressed everything that I was going to ask, and Dennis answered a lot of the questions that I had. So the only additional things I was thinking about was in the council overflow, that area. I know we use this sometimes for elections, we convert this space for elections, so converting that space for that as well, but that's pretty much it.
Well, with the meeting rooms, you wouldn't need to convert the chamber to anything.
Yeah, could use the blue room.
Right, we could use one of the different rooms. It's true.
The ante chamber.
More options there.
More options there, so.
The BOSE has expressed an interest, because there are some issues with this room, using it as a polling place, that, that they would like to move to that space once it's available.
It's drawing the line. How far from the front door do you go? So thank you for the presentation, first off. Ryan mentioned cost, and I think we talked about it before, that we, we can't ignore the fact that if we don't move the council chamber there, there's going to be cost in that space anyway, and then there's going to be cost if we want to retrofit this area, increase functionality. So I, I would like to see like a, a total cost picture of different scenarios, because, you know, you, you threw out one point eight or two point two million, I guess you back out five hundred thousand, but that's not like, if we don't move the council chambers, we're saving one point eight to two point two million.
Right.
There's going to be, on the flip side of the coin as well, so I'd like to see that.
It's a very important point.
Looking at the design, I, I think there's a lot of sitting space there. I think my preference, I, I hear what Neil's saying about the, the partitioning of the building, and if it, if it's driven by structure, I understand that. I'm not too keen, I don't think, on the partition of the two rooms, but I do think there's a lot of seating area there, as far as the blue and the, the blue and the yellow. And if, my drawthers would be, if we could program the chambers to serve as the community room as well, and I don't know what kind of functionality you'd have to do to, to make it such that it could, then we can open up the other space to do something. And I, I, I was thinking something like a, a more grandiose lobby, adding some, some office space there as well. I mean, as it stands right now, you've kind of got a lobby coming in, but it's a lobby that's split between police functionality and other functionality, and you've kind of got this little appendix of a foyer there. Some thought to a more grandiose lobby where we can hang Sydney's picture, or something like that. Or even make it more functional. On Neil's comments about putting all the employees under one roof, I mean, the third floor is going to have some of our employees that are non-police function over there, so we are going to have employees over there. And, you know, if we were to program the first floor to have other employee functions as well, you know, that, that wouldn't bother me in the least, I don't think. But really, you know, my point before is, I, I trust your expertise. I mean, you know the organization, you know the sizes of the, the different units, and I assume we're not going to be splitting up code enforcement and planning. And so, and you've been working this project. And so that's why I threw out the question, what your preference is. I wasn't trying to be glib about anything. I really want to know what your preference is and why. So I'm, I'm not quite sold on, on moving the, the council chambers across the street. I'm not opposed to it either, I, I just want to hear the best plan. I, I thank Mike for giving a historical perspective, you know, I want to know where things came from, kind of what a lawyer's called stare decisis, but I, I'm not bound by that. So my thought process is really going to be, you know, what, what spaces function the best with what, where.
You know, from my perspective, and Mark's already heard this, so it's not going to be a big surprise, that if council decides not to move forward, the best option is for us, is to leave the third floor vacant. Again, we have not allocated any cost to renovation of that, but allows the greatest flexibility from an administrative standpoint, rather than dividing City Hall functions into two levels. Really, you're left over with a really small piece on the ground floor, unless you get rid of the community room. And I think that's a primary fact that we've already incorporated into the requirements for the police station. From my perspective, the third, having the whole third floor, that does cause some issues with the police department configuration and how the building is used.
But Dennis, I think, I think Rob's question was, if you were making the decision on these choices, I think Rob is trying to get you to, to pick one of the options.
And to put it out there, I did not like at all closing off the one side, but because you had police functionality on both sides of the building, I don't think that's workable.
This is, obviously, this is a policy decision. You don't have to answer that, but you're wel, you're welcome to give us a recommendation if you want.
We are elected to make those decisions, using the information provided by staff.
From a long-term standpoint, I, I do think it addresses some of the needs at City Hall.
What does?
That moving, because you will eventually-
Moving the council chambers.
Because it frees up additional space. And it's really space that we can use for kind of meeting rooms and other things that we need to have occur. It, it does have other impacts too, you know. You, you could not move over there, but you will end up spending more money here, because I assume you probably do some dais redo and things like that when we do the new AV room, because you'll want different equipment that we can't accommodate here. And part of the limitation of this room is, if you get planning commission in here, if you've ever been when planning commission is here, it's fairly tight for them. This would allow us to actually to have reconfiguration of having council at the top and maybe even staff at a lower level, so it's easier to re-manipulate that room for each of the different commissions as opposed to a set council dais. We haven't explored any of those options yet. I mean, that's kind of my feeling, it would put off adding on to City Hall or doing some redo of this.
Right. And I think, I think, I think the recommendation makes sense.
Yeah, I think, well, okay, so if you throw, throwing the idea that one of the potential things, that one of the things that we might consider eventually, or some council would consider, is adding on to City Hall, this building, it doesn't, and that doesn't make any sense at all to me in terms of the, the structure and how you would configure the additional space. I mean, that would probably be much more costly than, than doing- I mean, that would probably be much more costly than doing something here. You know, when we originally started talking about this, in addition to the council chambers, and certainly credit to Kathy for reminding us that we really needed a meeting space in city hall that would accommodate a larger group of people than the gallery and our chamber.
And accessibility.
And accessibility, the issue of going up and down between the spaces that are used. The other thought was that there might actually be a gallery space. We have something called a gallery upstairs that, you know, it's pretty much inaccessible to the public now. And when I was first elected, the city hall was open, you could go up and see the gallery. We had exhibits there, we had receptions, and we don't do that anymore. It would be nice if one of the spaces here could be used for something like that. But I don't, as you've shown us, I don't see the possibility that that would happen here, as you've designed 2A here. But I think in terms of how we go forward, this probably is, provides the greatest potential for us to continue to accommodate growth of both the city staff, you know, gonna be 70,000 people soon, or more, I guess, in 20 or 30 years, we'll be over 100,000 in the city here. Operations, gonna have to hire more staff and find places for them to work, to sit while they're working. So I think we need to be able to accommodate that. I agree that there's a lot of sitting space here, and a lot of it during the course of the day is not going to be used, but that goes with just about any city in the United States that has municipal space. But I think it's a space that we want to be attractive and inviting, and I think as we design it, the public and staff and council will find other ways to think about how we might utilize it effectively and efficiently. So, you know, all in all, I think, I agree we need to have it kind of the bottom line here, of what the total cost is gonna be for this project. I think the other thing we haven't talked about is what happens to the house, the building in Folks' Corner, the existing police station, and how that might be utilized, that property might be utilized as well in the future. But, or, whether we surplus it and provide it to somebody else, an opportunity for redevelopment in Old Town. So, you know, I'm, I like the, certainly the plan for the police station and the facility is quite comprehensive, certainly accommodates additional growth that we expect to happen. And I think that if we use the rest of the building for public interactions, interactions with the public, then that's an efficient use, and it solves some of our problems here at city hall. I think ultimately, if we really wanted a recommendation, I'd ask staff to finish the space study first before they gave us a recommendation on what the preferences might be. So, that's where I am.
So you, that last thing just threw me off. Where are you?
No, no, I'm ready to move forward with what we see now.
I'm sensing we have at least a majority on that point?
Yeah, I agree. I think that, first of all, I just wanna come back to the point that I think that the city hall is bursting at the seams. Wandering around the area where the full-time staff works, I'm amazed at how crowded things are, at how little shared workspaces there are. I'm used to seeing office space where there are not only larger conference rooms, but where there are little nooks with whiteboards and things like that to collaborate. That's not the way people get things done anymore. So, you know, if we, if getting us out of your way helps to build this kind of space that allows the staff to get their jobs done better, I'm all for it. You know, I think there are definitely pluses and minuses. Again, reiterating the point that Rob made, is the cost of moving it across the street is inflated by the fact that it includes the AV cost, which has to happen whether this chamber moves or not. But, you know, if we don't move it there, there's gonna be something to fill that space, and that's gonna cost money anyway. So, I don't see the cost as being a big factor, it's, the number is much larger than the reality of what has to be spent one way or the other. So, I think it's needed, and it's the best option that we have at this point, so I support it.
All right, so I think you've gotten some guidance here, right Dennis?
Yeah, it's important that we have pretty much a definitive answer, because it will have an impact on how we go forward with the design. In terms of next steps, since councils decided to move forward with that, what we would propose doing is having staff do a little bit of research on what is currently happening in the field of council designs, looking at dioceses and all of that. And then we'd probably come back to a work session where we would present those concepts to you to get a better feel. We can also explore whether moving the partition one way or the other helps, whether we could subdivide that room. We believe we have enough funding in the architectural, soft costs, to actually engage the architect. That was not part of their original scope, other than to come up with the schematic design. We would need to supplement their fee to finish out the council chambers design, but we already have enough budget left over from what we allocated originally. We would have to start talking about how the funding would occur, but that's a little bit later process, whether it be in the FY19, or we would have to actually amend the budget. There's a timeline issue, is we were hoping to start construction sometime in May of 19, which would actually be in the same fiscal year, so we would have to have that discussion at that point, but...
May of 19 would be in the same fiscal year? May of 18? May of 18, yeah, okay. Gotcha. All right, all sounds good, so we'll look forward to the next work session on this, where the ideas are developed a little further. Anything from any other staff while we're here? Not seeing anything, okay. The next regular meeting of the mayor and city council is next, Monday, June 19th, 7:30 PM right here, and I will remind everyone that we have an exec session immediately following this meeting. So until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.